Being 7:00 PM, I will call the Common Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Trader.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Gallups.
Here.
Mrs. Kane. Mr. Gotsky.
Here.
Mr. Wurch. Mr. Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reading from the 70th Psalm. Let all who seek you, O Lord, rejoice and be glad in you. Let those who love your salvation say evermore, God is great. But I am poor and needy; hasten to me, O God. You are my help and my deliverer, O Lord; do not delay. We pray. Good and gracious God, hasten to be present with us at this evening's meeting. Send your Holy Spirit to guide us, to grant us your wisdom, to carry out the business of this city. Grant your wisdom to those who lead this place and all who are in attendance, to accomplish your will for the betterment of all who live here in this place. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Is there an approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by John Split, seconded by John Gotsky. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. All right, public comment. This is the opportunity for citizens to come before the council with comments and concerns on any current city issue, knowing no action will be taken tonight. I ask that you keep it civil and respectful and within five minutes. However, discussion of personnel or individual members of the common council shall not be permitted. I expect you to be respectful, and in return, I expect the council to treat the citizens with the same respect. Before you begin, please state your name and address for the record. Tonight, we have a comment from Doug Iverson.
Doug Iverson, 543 Fenton Street here in the city of Ripon. I'd like to speak to you all tonight on the resolution for the sales tax that's been rebated to us from Fond du Lac County with the half percent sales tax increase. I think it's a great idea. I like the idea that we're going to, you want to use it for downtown to make it look better, the new signage and stuff. When I sat on the council here for four years, part of the problem I always had with this kind of request was that, what's in it for the city? What are we going to get back for? And it was always, for instance, economic activity. Economic activity does not give us revenue back to the city for something we were going to put out for. For instance, the Mitchell Fund money, the Mitchell Estate money. It was, there was proposal, a serious proposal, to renovate the quads with that money. My question was, what's the city going to get back for? It was just economic activity. We were going to get anything back, but now here's an opportunity, a very innovative program, if you ask me, that Fond du Lac County is going to give back some of the sales tax money that people are paid in, it's going to come back here to our community to hopefully then increase quality of life, economic activity, or whatever. But we're getting something back for doing something to help the greater community. Thank you very much, and take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. I do have a proclamation this evening. All right. Whereas Roy Yeomanz has been an important member of the Ripon Business Community and Ripon Rotary Club for 70 years, and whereas Roy Yeomanz arrived in Ripon in 1951 after serving bravely in the Army during World War II, Roy immediately joined his father as a chiropractor in Ripon, where he continued to practice until his retirement. Roy also joined the congregation of Our Saviors United Church of Christ upon arriving in Ripon. And whereas Roy joined the Ripon Rotary Club in January of 1952 and served as its president in 1970 and 1971. He is also a Rotary Paul Harris Fellow, one of Rotary's highest honors. He was a member of the Junior Chamber of Commerce until he aged out. Roy also grilled many burgers for Ripon's Maxwell Days and has been serving the city of Ripon in many volunteer roles since 1951. And whereas Roy Yeomanz's son, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren are integral parts of the Ripon community, all because Roy and his late wife Ruth chose to live in Ripon. And whereas Roy Yeomanz represents what the city of Ripon hopes all its citizens can become. Now, therefore, I, Theodore Grant, Mayor of the city of Ripon, do hereby proclaim the 2nd of February 2022 as Roy Yeomanz Day throughout the city of Ripon and urge all citizens to express their gratitude to this outstanding individual for his contributions to our Ripon community, proclaim this 24th day of January 2022. I'm seeking a motion to ratify this proclamation.
Motion to ratify the proclamation?
I'll second.
Moved by Howard, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion?
Where did this proclamation idea come from?
This particular one was put forth by members of the Ripon Rotary Club.
Okay.
And brought to Adam and myself.
Just a question.
I thought there was a great article recently in our local Ripon paper, it opened Commonwealth's Press, featuring Roy and his work in the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further comments or questions, all those in favor of ratifying this proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Thank you. Moving on to our first action item tonight. This is an application in the city of Ripon for a Class B fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor license for the remainder of the 2021-2022 licensing year for the Fox and Crow LLC, under the name Fox and Crow Bistro at 302 Watson Street.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Moved by Al, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion? Jolene?
I'll just add that I talked to Patrick, who is applying for this, and he's been, what it sounds like, a longtime member of the Ripon community and sort of involved in the Ripon area, I want to say, and has been successful from what it sounds. And so I'm grateful that he is choosing to spend his time, talent, and energy in Ripon.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Moving on to the outdoor open container entertainment event permit application. This is placed by Ripon Main Street for an event on February 19th, the Polka on Ice Event at the Village Green.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Howard, seconded by John Split. Any discussion or questions? Craig is here tonight, if anyone has any questions for him on the event. Al.
Police Department Chief Wallner, approve the application.
Yes, he's nodding yes.
Very good.
And it looks like he has a comment.
I just want to make sure that we're understanding this diagram correctly, and by the way, it sounds we are. It's the area of Sword Street. I guess you would say alongside Ripon Drug, but basically moving events onto that area. So this does not include the rest of the downtown area, just solely for that space, correct?
The parking lot's still open, right, for Ripon Drug?
Yes.
Okay.
The way that I see that. And I'm assuming that part of the problems there is because of, not really a problem, but the ice rink takes up the majority of the green space with the fencing, so they're asking for this additional space for this event.
And they're utilizing a bigger tent this year to accommodate more people, so.
Is there anything you want to add about how it went last year? Was there, I assume if there was any issues or anything?
No. Yeah, it was different than this. It wasn't onto the public space, it was on the private space, but there was no issues.
That street's going to be completely closed.
I'm sorry.
For that section, it's closed, the street.
Yeah, the half block.
If you approve this, this section of the street will be closed.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions?
I mean, since Craig is here, this is when we can bring up the, to ask him if there's anything else he wants to add. I was present at it last year, and there was a lot of people from the community that commented, I heard, was it was nice to be able to look forward to something in winter when it's really cold, and especially as we still continue to battle with COVID, people, I think, feel safer that it is mostly outdoors with the fresh air.
Yeah, so the difference this year is, as Howard mentioned, a bigger tent, and our plan is to, last year it was nice having the band on the bandstand, but it was a little bit cold for the bands, so this will give us a chance of putting a stage under the tent, having the band under the tent, a heated tent. So we're tweaking it a little bit, and we just have less room on the green space than we did last year, so.
And as a side note, in the future, plans for development of that green space expansion, this kind of thing might move back onto the greens.
Could very well. Just depends on what we end up doing with other parts of the, of the green space.
I mean, I guess I did just make an assumption here about sort of a little bit of airflow. Is there, are there plans as far as, again, to kind of keep people moving, or if they want to spread out, do you feel that it will be accessible in that way?
I think so. You know, usually I have to get through something once before I know how to tweak it the next time, so the tent is bigger. It's a little bit different because we don't have that space in front of the bandstand for seating like we did last year. It's just a little bit different.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this outdoor open container entertainment event permit application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Moving on to the city HVAC control proposal.
So as you are hopefully all aware, in the 2022 budget, we did put $125,000 aside for the upgrade of HVAC controls for City Hall here. There are a multitude of issues and, you know, repairs that are needed every year to the HVAC system, mostly because I believe when the police department addition was put on, there was not a full overhaul of the heating and cooling system, so it sort of fights. So Mike and I had worked on doing an RFP. We received one response to that RFP from J&amp;H Controls tolling $109,950 to, as you can see there, basically put in a comprehensive control system to sort of solve some of these, hopefully solve some of these problems, I think they will. We reviewed it at Public Works Committee, they recommended, reviewed and recommended approval of the proposal from J&amp;H Controls. And frankly, hopefully, this kind of puts a long history of issues with the HVAC system to rest for at least the time being, so. Be happy to answer any questions or? Yes.
Also, the Public Works Committee vetted this proposal quite extensively and does recommend approval to the council, so.
I guess my question is maybe just for someone, like what's the, what's the average life of this type of system that we'd be putting in?
So this is a very modern system compared to what we have now, but the actual system, you know, this gets back to some of the planning issues and just generally what, what replacement of the bigger animal, which is the whole, the whole system, which we're talking significant investment there. So, you know, in terms of overall cost, I think this is a necessary thing, just merely from the battles we've had with the system to get a control of it. But then ultimately, the next step of, you know, are we, are we just sort of putting lipstick on a pig? Yes, a little bit, but we quite frankly do not have the full plan in place to deal with this building yet, which we have an RFP, a master plan for this building out right now.
So that was my follow-up question to it, was does this marry into whatever that next plan is for this building, right? If we're putting something in for $100,000, it's going to last 20 years.
Yep.
Can part of that mesh with whatever is happening?
Depending on the overall goal, yes, it can, and ultimately, you know, that would be a project that's probably, you know, many years away anyway, so. I mean, Mike can talk about how often J&amp;H Controls is here and can also comment on, on the climate that our employees have to work in, and frankly, this needs to be addressed even without that bigger plan right now. So we would like to have a, you know, a bigger plan in place that said, this is, you do this year, and the next year do this, this, and that's what we're working toward, but this is a pretty big priority.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Moved by David, seconded by Al. Any further questions or comments? Jolene?
Is there any insight into why this was the only response to the RFP? Is it simply because there's not many people that do this to this, this level, or is there any other insight? It wasn't an issue about getting the information out, correct?
No, we did everything required of us to post the RFP in paper online. You know, I think there's, if some, you know, that's, we did what we could. J&amp;H Controls has a history here. I think part of the thing is, is I think J&amp;H Controls spent a good day here just going over this whole, so, you know, there's some time invested into it, and it is somewhat complicated, and being familiar with the system, you know, certainly does help in their case.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Moving on to a leak adjustment policy. Adam.
So in your packet, you will have a draft leak adjustment policy that relates to utility bills. I can certainly, I hope it's kind of self-explanatory, but Public Works did recommend approval. And generally speaking, what we're trying to accomplish here is when somebody has a significant leak in their house, and we bill quarterly, sometimes those bills become significant. Jeremy, if you'd like to add anything, come on up. But, yeah, go ahead, yeah. Yeah, you can answer.
I just had a brief summary, I guess. I guess in the past, at least as far as I've come across, there's never been like a consistent policy in order to handle these sort of disputes with customers. This policy was drafted in order to establish a more consistent procedure when a customer receives a high bill due to excessive consumption of water inside of their home or building due to an unexpected plumbing failure. I guess as the policy states, the city is responsible for maintaining and the operation of the water and wastewater distribution systems, and each property owner is responsible for the installation, maintenance, and repair of water piping from the curb stop to the main building, and the wastewater piping from the connection of the service lira to the sewer, city sewer main. It allows for customers to apply for a one-time adjustment due to the failure of the plumbing that falls under the property owner's responsibility, and it also outlines a consistent procedure for staff to follow when evaluating these situations. Our hope that is that if the customer does receive a leak adjustment, it'll make their bill more manageable, but also emphasize the importance of maintaining and repairing the plumbing that they are responsible for, which further minimizes the risk of another leak or high bill. Again, the document kind of outlines the details of it pretty well, I think, but if there's any other questions, feel free to ask.
I do have a question. In the leak adjustment rules for rental properties, the first paragraph or first statement says, if a leak occurred in a rental property and the tenant is required to pay the utility bill, the tenant is responsible for the normal consumption portion of the bill. I'm a little confused on that because... So just, just explain that to me on the normal portion of the bill.
Yes.
And who pays the remainder, then? The owner of the building?
Yes.
And then?
Yep, so, so we have, you know, a current situation where there was, in a property, a leak, and there was a landlord and a tenant. It's a significant bill over a period of time, thousands of dollars, okay, in a basement toilet. Under this, you know, under this guideline, what we would do is we would look at, what is the average bill for that, that tenant? Say it's $150 a month, they would be responsible for that portion of it. The remainder would then, based on us adjusting it down and getting the lowest possible rate, would be the responsibility of the landlord, the rest of the bill. Ultimately, you know, the logic behind that is ultimately the landlord is the owner and responsible for maintaining their property. And oftentimes, these happen in situations where the tenant has no idea that it's happening. And in this case, to, you know, in some of these particular cases, to push this onto a tenant, frankly, could be staggering. You know, in the, in the example I bring up, you know, there's a $3,000 bill right now, that's, that sort of would fall on, under our current practice, the tenant. That, that's, that's why this is here. You know, there, there are situations happening all the time. The landlord has, has skin in the game in this, as well as we'll work with both of them to come to a conclusion that, that ultimately saves them money.
Right.
Because right now, you know, we'd be either shutting off someone's water or rolling it to the tax bill once that tenant leaves.
Okay.
So, so it does benefit both, you know, at the end of the day.
The reason I asked was because I had a similar situation in a rental of mine, and I own a property downtown with one water meter, so I pay the utility, the water, utility. The tenant ran, the toilet was running for three months. I mean, I had 300 or 400, I don't remember exactly, but it was a water bill of $300 or $400.
Yep.
It was absolutely the tenant's fault. He never notified myself, the landlord. And so then, we talked, he paid, but would this statement, would this statement hold up? I'm asking Lud now, would this statement that he only pays the normal usage, would that hold up in court for the tenant and the landlord would still have to pay, you know, the larger amount?
Obviously.
I mean, I don't know if I'm explaining it right or not, but... Well, the contractual relationship between you and the tenant can be discussed and debated or further clarified by lease and written documentation, who's going to be responsible in the event there's a problem with the property. And courts will resolve that as they will. This is about taking the city out of the middle of that debate, if you will, and setting forth a policy that says, this is how we're going to approach it. And the first instance is, say to the tenant, you're still going to be responsible for the normal usage. The question of whose fault it was may be part of a adjustment. And the last line of the agreement says, both the tenant and property owner and management company must sign the leak adjustment application. So it says to all the parties involved in that scenario, you may get an adjustment, but acknowledging upfront that, that bill for those three months is going to be, for the tenant, the average that they've been using. Whether you put the responsibility on the tenant is between you and the tenant, and can be argued between the two of you, either in a court of law or just by contract resolution between the two of you. But the city's going to step back and say, we bill the tenant, because the tenant, I don't know what your other situation is, normally, the tenant gets billed. That's what we're saying, correct? That's why we, we want to step. Not in all cases, a tenant would get billed. Not in all cases, a tenant. That's, that's what you're clarifying, I get that. Yes. And so all we're saying here is that the city just is going to look at the average bill that the tenant's paid. If you've got a situation where you're not, the tenant isn't paying, then this wouldn't apply. If you're paying the bill all the time, this phrase would not apply.
Okay.
You can add a clause in there as simple as, like, if the tenant is getting billed for the property, to clarify his point.
Yeah, that, you certainly could. You certainly could.
And that's why...
That may be a good point.
It was added at Public Works Committee, the tenant is required to pay the utility bill. You know, that is meant to mean that if, if that relationship exists, and they're the ones being billed quarterly as the tenant, that, you know, this is how it would work versus in the other situation.
So what, what the add-on clause says is Jim's point.
Maybe billed as a...
And it should be read as, and the tenant is required.
Yeah.
And, so that as a clarifier, your, your situation would apply here. Your, your, your situation wouldn't apply. So you saying, I'm always paying the bill no matter what, and they failed to tell you they had a leaky toilet, then you have the right to say, you should have told me, I'm paying the bill, and now I'm in this situation. But then you have the right to get it adjusted according to this policy. It was a plumbing failure. It was a plumbing failure that you were unaware of, and perhaps the tenant was, or maybe the tenant was aware, should have been aware, is what you're saying.
Jolene?
I want to say, I think this is a very creative solution to, I think, a problem that is more common than what we may realize. I was renting a property, or, you know, I was a, I was a renter, and this happened to me, where we had a leak outdoors, I didn't realize about it because we do not bill monthly, and so the bill that I received was quite substantial. And thankfully, we were able to pay it, but it, that, if we were, you know, on a fixed income, this would have been really, really a concern. And so I think this is... And so I think this is creative. In my mind, I thought I would need to advocate for, you know, monthly billing or, you know, more regular billing so that we could have caught that leak. And so I think this is a creative solution, being that we don't have that. But my question is then, now recently, in my home, we did install the smart meter. And my understanding is, is that the purpose of that was so that if there was a leak, it could help people not be caught off guard and not wait until your bill to realize, oh my goodness, there's something off here. Can you explain more about the process of, how are we actively monitoring, using now this new technology so that we can catch the leak, so that the situation that's creatively being, you know, addressed here hopefully won't even get to this?
Well, it would be great if we could afford one of those meters for every single home building that's in the city, but that would be a substantial cost that we can't afford right now. And currently, we're still manually reading, I think it's over 500 meters, that are actually on a walking route. So the technology is there. It would be great if we could afford it. This is just kind of, hopefully, a patch until, I guess, we eventually get there, and then we can have a more active role in leak management. But currently, right now, the technology is too expensive, I guess, for us to expand everywhere.
What if a home has that right, if a property has that? What does the process look like for catching a leak? Is that being actively monitored, and are people being notified if something is noticed? Do we have the ability right now?
No, we do not have the ability right now to, I guess, keep watch or monitor everybody's water meter. We just don't have the technology to do that currently. Or we don't possess it.
Yeah, but the technology is there for those properties, but we don't have then the time, or we don't have the ability then because of personnel.
We don't have the water meters that actually give live leak detection, like the one that you're talking about.
Oh, we don't? Okay, that was my, that was my misunderstanding.
We have signal, radio, or like radio, and I guess Wi-Fi or cellular meters that do transmit data, but they don't do the leak detection like what you're talking about.
Because my understanding was, is that now that I have one installed, if suddenly my usage goes, has a spike, that the technology would show it when it sends the data back? And then wouldn't that be an indication of a leak?
Yes, that would be. And then you, as the homeowner, would be getting that notification and know to address something inside of your plumbing.
But aren't you saying, what am I, but if you're saying that that is currently happening where we're seeing the spike, we're saying we do have the technology to notice?
And we don't see the spike right now currently with our technology. And in order to invest in that type of technology, it would take a lot of funding to implement that citywide. And our focus on replacing meters currently is the ones that are still manually read. So we are still quite a ways away from achieving that technology or having a widespread use of it.
We have Wi-Fi capable meters. We do not have live-streamed meters at this point, sending data 24/7 on every single property.
Accurate description.
That is correct. And so the priority now is getting everything at the level where we can read it cellularly or with a radio read. That is the priority. After that's done, the next step will be implementing measures that you are talking about. The thing about that is, is it's incredibly costly at a time where the meters we have to replace are incredibly costly. Okay, so, so one day, it is our goal, we've talked about this, you know, is to implement technology that tries to catch this ahead of time. The other thing is moving to monthly billing. And, you know, because right now quarterly billing is, is where this becomes an issue. Monthly billing, you can catch it because every month you're getting a bill. But we do proactively look at this. We do go through our bills, and if we see an abnormal amount, our billing clerk will check it, flag it. So even if it's, you know, not the full quarter that there's a leaky toilet, there's only the last, you know, say, three weeks and it's an elevated amount, we do try to be proactive in notifying them, saying, hey, we think you have a leak, here are leak packets, things like that. So we do try, but to the technology of implementing, you know, where we can sit up here and just say, hey, it's alerting us when there's a leak. We are not even close to being there yet.
And just so then, I understand, because I do, again, I'm so sorry then if I'm not understanding this, but I have a currently a smart meter.
In your house?
In my home.
Yeah, so something you probably want to talk to him about how to use it, is what he's saying.
But I would...
You have it.
Yeah, exactly.
You need to know how to use it to identify when there's a problem in your home.
But so the city can't see that data?
Only when we read it.
Only when we read it.
So the issue, so you can, but the issue is we're still only checking that even though it's pinging quarterly. I was assuming because it was easier to check, it would be pinging, you know, it would be happening monthly, but what we're saying is...
Sure.
I now understand. So we could, but it's, we don't have the capacity.
Right. Sorry, I probably didn't explain it as clearly as I could have, but...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions on the leak adjustment policy? Jim?
It did mention about one billing adjustment will be allowed per premise or service. I would assume that'd be per owner, possibly? Because like if I saw my house, if I had a five years down the road, somebody else was there...
Good point. That's the intent of the leak.
It's a tough one only for the mere fact of the landlord-tenant situation. That's where, you know, one premises was, I think, meant to be...
I understand that.
Yeah, one premises, not, you know...
You change tenant, you come back again and again and again.
Yeah, and the other option is, I mean, that's in perpetuity, the way it's written. It doesn't say it, but that's forever. So to what point, I mean, 20 years down the road, somebody else has a toilet issue...
Well, smart meters.
Maybe by the... That was just my thing, that obviously I shouldn't be hampered by somebody else's previous, you know, that I could have an issue too as a new owner to the community or anything like that. Never even lived here, nothing to do with the property. Now I have an issue five years from now, and I can't get help because the previous owner...
I think the framework of this and the intention of it is to provide some flexibility there, but also on the flip side, you know, if this is a habitual problem, to get somebody to fix it, because we can't continue to discredit them back, so...
Yeah, I mean, we've been on this rodeo, lack of better term, I think every year, I think I've dealt with this since I've been on council, where somebody has a leak and there's an issue. And a lot of it's property owners and taking care of their property, plain and simple. It's nothing with the equipment, anything like that. It's people leaving for Florida or Arizona this time of year, and they don't have anybody checking their house, they don't shut their water off, whatever, and there's a leak. Or to the point, a basement toilet that hasn't been checked in how many months? Again, a lot of that is self-reliance on themselves. Part of this did address the fact of, the adjustment would be made only for the water we could see what didn't get into the sanitary sewer system, correct?
Yeah.
So that would only be anything outside the property, like a hose?
A hose where it would be discharging onto the ground or something like that. Obviously, it's not entering the sanitary sewer, so it's not being processed by our facility, I guess. That's also where, I guess, the gray area kind of comes in, and the statement on the second page says each application is reviewed monthly, and I guess depending on those extra factors, they'll be taken into consideration and history when considering a billing adjustment.
So what adjustment will be made only for outside then?
No, so if your water usage goes over a certain amount, the price usually decreases over time, and if that portion of the bill is determined to be adjustable, that water will be billed at the lowest possible rate.
Yeah, I saw that part too. What would that then be to the lowest possible rate? Would that be the lowest consumption over the last four months? Because in the rental properties, it referenced the average consumption over four billing periods.
No, it's the rate of the water itself, actually, so per gallon or per cubic foot.
But not the sewer charge?
Not the sewer charge, yeah.
And that's what we've done in the past, a lot of times, that we can say it's been running, it didn't need treatment.
So that's a portion that can be, I guess, forgiven or adjusted as well too, but you can't say that all of a sudden they used 200 gallons and we're going to adjust it to using only 100 gallons. They actually have to be billed for 200 gallons, but it could be at a lower rate, and that's where the adjustment would take place.
We'd adjust the sewer before too, because we can show it didn't go down the sewer.
Yeah. And I guess the overall goal for that was just a consistent policy, and like you said, we deal with these consistently, and I've dealt with them since I've taken over. And there is, as far as I know, no policy to follow the order of investigating what's actually going on, what portion can be reimbursed, what portion can't be. And so I was just trying to apply some consistency to this process, so that way every customer is treated fairly as well too.
You can say you did it across the street, yeah.
Yeah.
I got no problem with that, Jeremy.
Yeah.
The only other question I have, it did mention irrigation above, but down below it talked about seasonal activities such as watering and such. Could that be contradictory to each other? Up above, we talk about irrigation systems that could be shut off, you know, as simple as a valve in the basement to shut off the irrigation system when not used.
I guess as far as seasonal things, we have a pool credit form. As far as filling that out, for the irrigation, you're not billed for the sewer portion of that, I guess. You could be. But you still have to be billed for your consumption, and if it's intentional, like watering your grass or something like that, then...
We could still get a special meter for that?
Yeah, possibly. That might be, it's not really a leak, I guess, maybe? I don't know.
No, but we've had that, where you can do the special meter if you're going to put in a new lawn and stuff like that for them. We could still do something like that for those type of people.
Probably look into something like that further, yes.
Good. Thank you, Jeremy. I appreciate your work on this.
Well, as a follow-up to my previous question, I think that I'm missing a moment to then make a public, you know, sort of statement. You're saying that if someone does have a smart meter, they can personally monitor it with an app. And so this is a good...
Most likely, yes. I'm not familiar with the apps or how they work because we don't have them currently. So that would be on themselves to learn their smart meter and how to use it and how to read it.
So as a homeowner that got the device installed from the city, I need to, I would contact who to find out how to use the app?
I would just contact the water department, and the water operator could probably walk someone through it.
Okay. And then I guess I would say that, you know, if we're doing less actual checks on the water meters, my, the point of, why I was told it was good to install it, and I should agree to install it, was so that it would save time, and it would be interesting to know at a future meeting, what would be needed from our, you know, what kind of resources we'd need then, if we have the capacity for the ones that haven't installed to monitor it? And it seems like it's a computer system that could simply just notify if something seems, you know, awry, you know, what would be needed, and what would be the investment?
Sure.
That would be, I think that would be helpful for us to know.
But I guess with our standing infrastructure that we have, are we only going to do that for the people that have them versus the people that don't?
So my question would be, how many do we have right now in the city? That would, anyways, I think in the future, it would be nice to have a report as to what percentage of properties in the city have it, what properties do we need to work towards having it, would it save us money in the future, would it not? Why have we started it, if it isn't something we're going to push forward? So I think it's just worth looking into for the future.
Sure. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it's something that, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments on the leak adjustment policy? All right, thank you, Jeremy. Hearing other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving this policy, say aye.
We need a motion.
Have we not had a motion yet?
We have not.
Is there a motion to approve this policy?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just again, before we vote, it's a policy. And I think there are some legitimate questions by John and by Jim, exactly what the wording fits and how it fits a particular set of facts. Jolene, it's a policy that leads you in a direction where you treat citizens fairly, and that's the goal. Every I and T can be massaged a little differently, but it's a policy. That's what you're passing this evening, and it will be worked with.
Thank you, Lud. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. All right, moving on to a rezoning request. Jason and Julie Tome like to rezone property located at 404 West Fond du Lac Street from R1 single family to R2, 1 and 2 family. This was presented to the plan commission and recommended for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Al, seconded by Howard. Any questions or discussion?
Question?
Yes.
So they're using this as a duplex even though it's R1? When was it converted to a duplex? And why wasn't it converted, why wasn't it rezoned?
The property was either built or converted to a duplex a long time ago. We don't know exactly when. And at the time it was used as a duplex, either no one checked on it or no one was enforcing the R1 zoning. Believe it is a current order that converted it to a single family. But it is still logically set up as a duplex that they were just using as a single family, and they would like to revert it back to a duplex.
So it already is a duplex, it's just...
It is built as a duplex.
It's never, it's been shown to be an R2.
Correct.
So you need approval to go from R1 to R2. Do you need approval to take an R2 to go back to an R1?
Yes.
Yes, but you can use an R2 as a single family.
And the R2 code allows for R1 uses, so once it's an R2, you never have to go back to R1 because R2 is, R1 is allowed in R2.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this rezoning request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Next is the Fond du Lac County Sales Tax and Use Allocation. Adam?
So in your packet, you will have a letter submitted by myself, and then also there's an email from Mr. Tivon. So basically, if you recall, Fond du Lac County did something pretty nice and created an aid program with sales tax dollars for municipalities. In late 2021, we were notified of this. We did not include it in any of our budgeting, but we will be receiving $51,333. The county has asked that we, in a motion or in some public meeting, identify the planned use of these funds and notify them of what that is to then distribute them in March. In consultation with Ted, the mayor here, and just staff and other council members, just in general, looking at what to spend the money on, we are bringing forward a recommendation to take the $51,333 and help fund the bid operating planned capital projects that were previously approved and identified at the council meeting in December and included in the bid operating plan, which includes wayfinding signage, streetscape improvements, recreational amenities, and installation of downtown Wi-Fi systems. Craig and his team at Main Street have engaged the community, put together plans, had consultants paid for by the WEDC to come in and sort of study this and put together a plan. That plan was shared with historic preservation, and it's kind of a comprehensive signage plan for wayfinding as well as updating the downtown banners, updating downtown parking directional signs, parking lots, very comprehensive in nature. The Main Street has also identified these projects in their budget and have approximately $13,000 that they would kick in. So in total, we would be able to infuse around $65,000 into the downtown and in the bid district, not just the downtown, but the full bid, to implement these projects. That is significant compared to previous years. Ultimately, there are a couple examples of what we're looking at, kind of funding. So there's a wayfinding sign, and then as well, you know, decorative street signs and/or stop signs for the downtown. So there's a wayfinding sign and then as well, you know, decorative street signs and/or stop signs for the downtown. There's only so much money, but we feel that, just in talking to Craig, we feel that $65,000 can get a lot done for the downtown and just sort of elevating everything that is currently happening down there. And ultimately, in looking at where this money should be recommended for, for what purpose, you know, I just, I think the common thing is sales tax here and trying to generate more sales tax. And whether it's corridor signs, trying on Blackburn, trying to get people to shop downtown or take a left or right, or it is, you know, promoting better parking or a better experience downtown, we hope that this investment generates greater sales tax for Fond du Lac County. So in the first year of their program, this is why this recommendation is coming forward to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And certainly it'd be a tag team approach with Craig and myself and staff to kind of prioritize step by step this whole entire project, to spend, you know, every penny as best we can and get as much done as we can.
So this is an annual, we don't know how much, roughly $50,000 every year?
Yes.
Anticipated.
Anticipated around, yep, yep.
Not guaranteed?
Not guaranteed. In talking to Gary Will about it, you know, representing our side of the county here, he's pretty confident that it'll be every year. I will also say that there are no requirements for it, you know? So this is really direct aid for anything in terms of, you know, the recommendation, the sales tax, but also I think the plan is in place, ready on the shelf to go. So that's why it's also here. But yeah, so in future years, we can, we'll do the same sort of exercise and sort of prioritize, you know, hopefully more money. But you don't know, so.
But it's not something we can just put in a general budget and thinking it's coming every year?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it for expenditure restraint purposes, too, you know? Putting it in the general fund budget. And they're not going to identify the amount until late every year, until maybe after our budget's even done. We can guess, certainly, but, you know, I think the goal here is to bring forward every year recommendations based on planning efforts and just needs. So if it, if this hap, if they, I would love to see this is, I don't know if there's any other county doing this. I don't think, I don't think it is, but I think it will become incredibly popular and people will really appreciate this because it's pretty forward-thinking from the county, so.
It's been very nice. I mean, it's a great thing to have, but it could just as easy to be voted out next year.
It could.
So we have to look at it from the perspective that it's just, could be a one-time thing, could be, we don't know. Correct?
Yeah, and part of, part of that as well is one of the reasons why the recommendation is coming forward with this project, to show the county that this money is getting used to try to generate more sales tax for them as well as make an improvement that our community can see.
So this is anticipated to be an annual allocation?
Yes.
Thank you.
But if the county board flips or the county council...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. I'm saying, I'm saying our role, back to the county, the county wanted a letter by February 1st.
Yes.
This is the letter we intend to send.
Well, you, basically.
Right, basically, with council blessing, back to the county saying this is what we're going to use the $51,333 on.
Yes.
This may bring or reoccur in January of 2023 where we come back to the council and say this year we got $48,650. Here's what we're asking the council to spend that money on.
Yep.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first I agree with the concept overall. Adam did call me and we discussed this as council president. Do we need to make, conceptually, we are indicating to the county, this is what we intend at this time to use the funds for, correct?
Yes.
Conceptually?
Yes.
So any details regarding number of benches, flowerpots, signs, who does what? All of those things can come in the future for future discussion, correct?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, ultimately, the money will be sent in March and I think, you know, working with Craig and Main Street will sort of put together the full budget for it to try to fund as much as we can. And become, you know, have as comprehensive as a concept as possible, you know? If we get to signs and benches and flowerpots and the $65,000 is done, you know, then we don't go on to pretty signs, you know, or pretty signposts, you know, so.
I understand, but how do I put this delicately? We have been accused of giving open books, open checks to others in the past. And so before we, this is a great con, it's, conceptually, it's great, but personally, I'd like to see some more detail. This is what it's gonna be spent for. The other thing is, and I know you and I talked about, I don't mean to ambush you, I don't see the chamber involved in this, which I know they share the same office. And the other question that was brought to me by some constituents is, what about the East End? And what about the West End? Because they generate sales tax just like the downtown. So conceptually, we can do this. In practice, maybe those are some things as we lay out the fine details on how the dollars are going to be spent, we incorporate the chamber, those type of things. I would even say that in the planning purposes and for generating the plan and those type of things, input from downtown, East End, West End, representatives of businesses that generate sales tax might not be a bad idea moving forward.
Mm-hmm. And this, I think that the signage plan is a community-wide effort and I believe there is a whole rebranding thing, too, that stretches out beyond just the downtown corridor. And to your point about the chamber, the chamber has been involved.
And that's great.
I have, I have contacted them.
And I'm sure you did, but that needs to be set. And it has been set now.
Yep.
So just, just some thoughts.
Yep.
Future repair, maintenance, upkeep of signage and/or Wi-Fi systems, things like that? Putting away bike racks for the winter or those kinds of things? Is that on Chamber, Main Street, Bid, City? Who's responsible then for these type of?
Yeah, I don't know what the current relationship is, but I, you know, frankly, you know, in terms of, you know, who's responsible, you know, some of these things have a longer life than others. I don't know who currently like insures the benches downtown or any of the pergolas or any of that stuff. That all has to be looked at because quite frankly, I, you know, who is responsible? Ultimately, with some of the funding, where it's coming from, yeah, the city will be on the hook for paying for it and maintaining some of it, but it's not like we're doing more than we're not already doing. We already have the benches out there, they just don't look nice, you know?
It's just the piecemeal look. And I get that that's, and this is disrespectful to Craig at all or anybody that's been involved. You do this project because you have this much money this year. Well, then guess what? Two years later, you can't get the same bench. So now we have these benches. And I guess, so this is, to make everything look uniform, condense, a condensed version of itself throughout. You can go to this street, see the same sign, that street, see the same sign. It will have a very much better aesthetic look to it and more inviting to consumers to come in and hopefully spend dollars, which then we can share back with tax. So I can see that. It's just, again, in the future, to Al's point, East, West End, can we take that same signage and push it up?
Yeah.
And things like that. And that's a concern I have that maybe next year we take $50,000 and we do it both that way. Or one way one year, one way the next, whatever. But can we get the same signage? Can we keep that same appearance, that same look?
That's the goal.
Yeah. You know, that's the concern I have with piecemealing, again, downtown, then the east. To what else, I just thought about that now after you said that. Do we end up with different looks, if you will? So, and then the upkeep, that just worries me, too, because if one breaks, how do you fix it? Can we get repair? Who pays for it? Those kinds of things, so.
Any further questions?
I think one thing I would like to see is exactly how we're spending the $65,000. I think that's kind of what I'm hearing here is we don't really know what's being purchased. We have an idea of some of the things that could be purchased. But like you say, to stay, you know, are we gonna buy all the street signs first? You know, what are we doing with this money? We don't really have anything in front of us to show what we're buying with it.
John?
To Dave's question, I think with our historic preservation meeting, it was once Craig said he had a budget, then he could figure out how many signs he could afford, where to put them.
Yep.
According to that study, there are certain areas that are more important for directional parking and everything. So I think the answer to that is once Craig and the Chamber and City of Ripon, you know, Adam, has the budget, then they can figure out how many they can buy, where the location's gonna be that's gonna best serve the needs of the, you know, for parking and the signage. That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, same here. And, but there's nothing in front of us as far as the details of it now.
And I, and I agree. I mean, the reason is is because the timeline here has been, been pretty, you know, small. I mean, and frankly, we've never approached the Chamber or Main Street in this manner saying, here's $51,000 to help, you know? So frankly, they're sitting here saying, okay, how much work are we gonna put into this? Not knowing that it's gonna go toward this on top of, you know, contacting vendors, working toward all this. So Craig's working on it. I would have loved to have come and said, we're gonna spend 80, you know, 8,000 here, 7,000 here. I think there's, there's a part of this that, that, you know, we can come back and say, here's what we're doing for it, with it. Here's what, you know, here's what this costs. And, and, you know, frankly, we gotta spend the money at some point. We gotta get the project done. So, you know, I think if this is our planned use, certainly that plan can change or can be modified based on what, how far we can stretch the dollar. Certainly, Craig, if you want to comment on some of the overall costs on things, some things are pretty cheap. Some things can get pretty expensive and you can also get a deal by buying more. So you may be able to, so.
Yeah, so actually, the first step in the process is contacting suppliers who create these kinds of things. So there's a company called Tapco out of Brown Deer. I've reached out to them to find out how much a sign blank costs, what a signpost costs. Do we go with a two-by-two square signpost? Do we go with a round decorative signpost? So adding all of those costs up, then we can figure out how many signs we can create. That's in the wayfinding category. In terms of banners, we already have a design in place. We modified it based on what the wayfinding report suggested. So we know what we can do and Main Street, that's in our budget for that. We've already planted 60, 70 trees downtown. We have it in the budget to do more tree planting. So even if we don't get the $51,000, we're still doing some of that other stuff that we've identified previously. But, you know, typically, TIF funds are used to do this kind of stuff. When the downtown was revitalized, starting in 1990, it was TIF funds that bought the park benches, bought the streetlights, bought the trash receptacles, all that kind of stuff. All of that stuff is now 40 years old and it's showing its wear and tear. So in terms of replacement, that's how we should be addressing this in the future. Right now, we don't have capacity in our TIF, so it's kind of like we're between a rock and a hard place. But going forward, it's contacting Sternberg, finding out what a post costs, contacting Tapco, getting their bids for that kind of material. So eventually, within a few weeks, we'll know more detail about how many signs we can actually purchase, how many street signs we can actually replace.
So to what I'm hearing, and to move the topic along, I think everybody's kind of coming to the same consensus, this letter could be approved by the common council with the understanding that the specifics come back to this body at a later date, presentation from Main Street to show exactly what you have found out, what priorities you have placed in conjunction with Adam and Chamber and other stakeholders to say, these are the things we think we can get done for the $51,333 together with your $13,000 to make a difference combining the monies. But that can be part of a motion and we can have them come back. And I don't think anybody's suggesting, just go spend it. And that's, I think, what everybody is kind of coalescing around. So that would be the motion is to move forward the letter to the county, because that's the pressing timeline. They want something by February, with the understanding that those involved in this process will come before the common council, before any of the $51,000 is spent. And at that point in time, give their blessing to those expenditures.
And just a reminder, at this point, the county is just looking for a conceptual use of the money, not a detailed plan.
Right, right, exactly.
And that's what this letter is laying out, is the concept that we will be pushing forward with their money.
Exactly.
And that's the point I tried to make, conceptually. This is what, but the county can't hold a gun to our head and say...
Right. You didn't do that.
By next week, we need to know exactly what you're gonna spend on. That ain't fair.
The letter does state that it's a very broad scope of what we are planning and there's no way that we can afford with $65,000 everything on this list. So this is what our intentions are for. We will work out the details shortly. But tonight, we need the approval to send this letter to the county with our concepts.
Unless somebody else has another idea of how to use the tax allocation. The one idea, unless somebody else in this room has a better idea to help generate other sales tax for potential future gain for this community, I'm all here.
Correct, because in order to meet their timeline, we need to determine what letter is being sent tonight.
Then I have a question for you, Craig, please. In your 30-plus years' experience and through the studies you've gotten already done, this type of influx into the downtown will nothing but certainly help as far as generating revenue, feed on the street, consumption with our vendors downtown. It should do nothing but help.
Yes.
One look, one flavor, one design, aesthetically, it's gotta be a huge influx for you and just excited for you, even.
Yes, because we've been band-aiding this for 30 years. So it's not just, you know, it's certainly not just Watson Street. We're very interested in how we treat the Blackburn-Jackson Street corridor because there's 7,000 cars a day driving up that corridor that a lot of them don't know we have a downtown one block away. So that signage could help influence additional sales, you know, people who are just passing through Ripon. And I'm certainly not here to say that we don't need improvement in other parts of our community, because we do.
Thank you, Chris.
It seems to me that we are quite lucky that we have someone in you, Craig, that, you know, you've done, I was at the... you know, you've done, I was at the visioning session that was just a few months ago, and it seemed to be that, you know, I remember wayfinding signs was one of the top things and some of these other things that are in this plan, again, I've been hearing from the community. And so even though tonight we have to make a decision, I know from being around some of these talks, from hearing from you, from knowing that you've engaged the community, you've even just said "we," this is not being presented by you, there are people that you work with in the community, that there has been a lot of input in this and it's well-informed. And so I think we are lucky to have you on.
And certainly, it's also, it's our relationship with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation that's helping generate these new ideas, so certainly.
Any further questions, comments, motions?
What Lud was talking about earlier, that he spent five minutes saying, I'll make the motion to approve that.
You said it shorter than I did.
Just make sure, this is your motion that we are?
Yeah, make a motion, you can't do that. You got to make a motion here. You can't just point the lad what he said earlier, you got to make a motion.
He intended.
You are correct. I would like to make a motion to approve this based on them coming back and giving us more details.
Approving this letter that Adam's put together.
Approving sending the letter.
I'll second.
Moved by David, seconded by John Split. Any discussion on that motion?
But just to clarify, it's a letter that's going to look close to this, because we will obviously have to change it to say that this was in support, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit.
So we'll, we'll make sure that the message is sent in the format that the county wants it, which is in minutes, and then we can support it with, you know, this document or similar document that says, here is the planned use.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to a resolution authorizing the construction of bicycle and pedestrian facilities on St. Wentz's Lost Street.
So there's a resolution in front of you. This was recommended and reviewed, or reviewed and recommended for approval at the Public Works Committee meeting. So all this is, is it's a, it's sort of a required resolution when we're applying for state aid, the local road improvement program that we applied for, for this project. So one of the things they like to see is a resolution authorizing the construction of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Pedestrian facilities means anything from a path to a sidewalk, so just think of that, that's what pedestrian facility is. And this doesn't immediately mean that we have to add like a bicycle path, that just, you know, it just shows that, you know, the council has said, you know, a component of this project is this. So in our initial plans for the project, there is the construction of, reconstruction of the sidewalk along the west side of St. Wentz's Lost, as then, well, on the east side, there will be the addition of a sidewalk that abuts Ingalls Field and a walkway with crosswalks, so on and so forth. I have some concepts if you want to see them. If not, the application has been submitted already for the funding or the L-RIP program, and this is just kind of a follow-up formality, so.
By having this type of resolution, that type of pedestrian bike route also clicks boxes on that application to make it more attractive for?
It's required.
Not even more attractive.
We can submit it without it, but then when they are reviewing it, you know, in the next few weeks as they review it, and they don't have that follow-up resolution, they say, well, you know, and all of a sudden, we don't have to fund that component of it because it was not approved.
Moved to approve the resolution authorizing the construction of the bicycle and pedestrian facilities on St. Wentz's Lost Street.
Second.
Who was the second?
Howard.
Howard, okay. Heard it over there, didn't see it. So moved by Jim, seconded by Howard. Any discussion or questions?
I know that this is not when we are deciding details of this, but I just want to voice my support for appropriate bicycling paths or signage on the street, because of course, we do know that that is such a common area for students of all ages, probably one of the most heavily used areas for students, and so who would tend to be on bike.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved.
Our last action item of the evening is a resolution terminating tax increment District Number Four.
You can read the resolution, and it's been, since 1994, when TID Four was created, we are now statutorily required to close out TID Number Four. This is commonly referred to as, I believe, like, the industrial park TIF district. It was a very successful TIF district. We did extend it last year at around this time to collect increment for affordable housing, so we will restock that fund and prioritize that this coming year. But sufficient increment has been collected and it is now required to be closed.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Al, seconded by Jim. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the resolution to terminate TID Four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
He signed that, I got to get it to him tomorrow.
All right, project updates and staff reports. Police department?
No.
Water? Bubble forks?
And?
I just wanted to say that there will be a spring primary election on February 15 in the city of Ripon. The only contest will be for District Four Council. Only residents living in District Four, which consists of wards nine, 10, and 11, will be voting at this election. Residents can go to myvote.wi.gov website to see which ward they live in, or they can call City Hall on 920748495 during our office hours. Also, in-person absentee voting for the spring primary election will begin on February 1st through February 11th during our normal business hours of 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. It's up on Thursday, February 10th and February 11th. I will be open until 5:00 p.m., and photo ID is required. You can also request an absentee ballot through the myvote.wi.gov website. You can also register on that website. If you need to register and don't want to use the website, you can always come down to City Hall, but you will need to bring proof of residence at the time of registration. Also, according to the court ruling, we can no longer use the Dropbox for absentee ballots. It's not allowed, so please either mail your absentee ballot in time for it to get to us for February 15th election, or bring it to City Hall during our normal office hours. Absentee ballots must be returned by 8:00 p.m. on the election day in order to be counted. That's all I have.
Thank you. Adam, do you have anything?
I would just like to note, I would like to congratulate our Director of Public Works, Mike Aronberg. He achieved his Public Works Management Institute certificate through University of Wisconsin Madison and the Wisconsin Chapter of American Public Works Association. So kudos to Mike for completing that workload and getting those certificates. That's a lot of work, so, congrats, Mike. I did also provide you all just a quick update on a couple things, you can read into it. The biggest one is, the Wisconsin Disaster Fund did award the city just shy of $120,000 in funding to help cover the costs of the storm from July. So you can kind of see a complete breakdown there of, you know, what the city received in terms of aid and what was claimed in terms of damages. So about, you know, $194,000 in storm damages tracked, so huge shout-out to all the department heads, Mike, Jeremy, Bill in particular, and Mitch as well, for their tracking and diligence with that storm to ensure that we had everything ready to go to submit to the Wisconsin Disaster Fund. So, you know, ultimately, you can kind of see the numbers at the end of the day, all considered, because of that tracking and because of those programs and because of some of the insurance claims that we had, this will not be a significant burden at all to our taxpayers. So that is good news.
Maybe that's worth another clap here.
Good job, everybody.
There are two planning RFPs that are out, so look for that in the coming months, one for Parks Master Planning and the other for facilities. So been busy and working on that kind of stuff, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Adam. My comment for the evening is that February is Love Your Library Month. I encourage everyone to visit our library and see all the services and items that they offer. They have much more than just books, so please check them out. If you don't have a library card, sign up and get yourself a library card, it's free. Are there any comments from the council or future agenda item suggestions?
I just had a question for Adam on the janitor position, part-time, 20 to 24 hours. What does that include with that? Is there benefits with that?
So we are required to do Wisconsin retirement, and then there is, like, vacation accumulated, so it'd be a similar position to the senior center director.
Not like health insurance?
No health insurance, no, nothing like that, no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm grateful to Ann for the update on the upcoming election, and I want to make sure everyone that's listening knows that if they, that there will be forums that are held in collaboration with the League of Women Voters and also the Ripon Channel, so that they will be able to watch these forums for the candidates of both city council as well as county boards, so that information will be on there. And I thought I had one other question related to that, but at this time, I'm just going to skip that.
All right, anyone else? All right, hearing none, I will seek a motion to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin Statute 19.851E deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. We'll be discussing sanitary sewer assessment reduction requests, as well as reviewing the minutes from the October 25th, 2021, meeting.
I thought of that question, I'm so sorry, and that was, do we still need election
If you're interested in becoming an election worker, just contact me.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session for the stated purpose?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned to closed session at 8:24 p.m.